Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Tacoma Public School Board for Thursday, April 27th, 2023 to order. Will everyone please rise and join me in the black slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just.
The Tacoma Public Schools acknowledge that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel Benro, would you mind calling the roll?
Yes. President Palmoret?
Here.
Vice President Shodder?
Here.
Director Keating?
Here.
Director McCullough?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And what about our student reps?
You know, we have a man who's here.
All right. Amanda, great to see you. All right. Moving on to item number five, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the agenda?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Do we have any comments, questions, changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, we have an agenda. Next item on the agenda is item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, recognition of Shining Star Community Partner Award to the City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services Site and Building Division. Hello, Tisha.
Hi. Is this on?
It is on.
So, my first time at the podium and I'm presenting to the City of Tacoma. How ironic. So...
Or appropriate.
Appropriate, yeah. So Tacoma Public Schools defined partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children, youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to the student success, TPS recognizes the schools cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Shining Star Community Partner Award signifies and honors, honors and thanks to our community partners who have made the difference by doing what is best for kids. With the continuous support of the Tacoma taxpayers, Tacoma Public Schools has invested more than 1.5 billion since the year 2000 in capital developments, replacements, and modernized teaching and learning facilities within the city of Tacoma limits on behalf of our students, staff, and community members. Over the past few years, TPS planning and construction has paved the way statewide with demonstrated excellence and performance regarding cost-effective building design, diversity, equity, inclusion on all projects, as well as the effective use of alternative public work contracting methods of project delivery, most notably the use of progressive design build. Like most success stories, excellence in performance is critical, but it is the partnerships and relationships that make that possible. One such partnership of note is the partnership between TPS and the City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services. The purpose of this nomination is to acknowledge and thank the City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services for their support and service to and for the district spanning decades of years and dozens and dozens of projects. Every project comes with a variety of challenges that range from weather, supply chain issues, market conditions, availability of labor and materials, et cetera. Replacing a school facility and or modernizing a school facility in an urban environment brings with it all the plus challenges with unknown underground conditions, right-of-way, off-site improvement requirements of significance, infrastructure limitations, constantly changing energy code requirements, stormwater controls, and management requirements. It, the list goes on and on. Given there are only two years, two days in the year for a school district and a project, the last day of school when people leave out, and the first day when they come back in, it takes a team of creative and innovative TPS and City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services staff members to find a way, find the ways to make it possible to solve all the problems and get to the goal of being occupied. The biggest part of the effort comes from the Planning and Development Services Department within the City of Tacoma and within that site and building division led by Mr. Corey Newton. TPS interfaces with a couple dozen or more City of Tacoma staff, frequently with a culminating weekly meeting, Friday morning permit and planning coordination meeting that today tracks and manages in excess of 35 total programs, permits. The City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services Site and Building Division team focuses on what needs to be done in order to help TPS achieve occupancy in lieu of simply what has to be done and in its, in its compliant. It is the ethos that supports finding solutions, even those that may not have been done before but are possible, looking back over the five to six years alone, some, but not all of the possible solutions that the City of Tacoma made available to TPS, paying for permits with credit cards. Gone are the days of getting the check value exactly correct. Creating a work order for City of Tacoma support on a regular basis, scheduled basis on demand availability at times, at any time for any reason. Utilizing multiple conditional use permits to allow TPS the ability to fund off-site improvements with future, for future capital bond programs. Sharing appropriate projects and restricted funds to improve the right-of-way, replace an entire street, not just half a street, at the time of TPS construction. Pre-bond off-site improvement scoping and cost estimating in advance of capital bond programs. And last, access to management whenever needed, most generally to help resolve those issues that require a variance to a standard practice. Tacoma Public Schools would not have the legacy of excellence in providing outstanding educational facilities for our students, staff, and community without the talent and continuous support of City of Tacoma. While every department within the city could be acknowledged, a mention at this time of the Planning and Development Services Department, a matrix organization inclusive of public works and environmental services staff members, and especially the team of talented creative staff members with the site and building division. It is with the kind, with this kind of support that TPS is planning, planning with the confidence of the next capital bond program, a program that nearly completes the vision set forth in the late 1990s, a vision of, to it that ensures healthy, safe, inviting, and cost-effective facility district-wide for every student, every day. Such a vision would not be possible without partnerships, and we, we have had with the City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services. Please join me as we celebrate and appreciate and acknowledge the City of Tacoma Planning and Development Services.
Good to see you.
So I just want to say thank you very much for this award, and the name is truly fitting because it is truly a partnership. I have to say a huge thank you to the school board and the administration for allowing this partnership to even happen. I remember many years ago sitting in a room with Morris talking about continuous improvement and how we could do our partnership differently, and I'll have to say we have come a long, long ways from that point, and it's truly an enjoyment to work with all of you to build safe and resilient, resilient schools. Thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you too, and I, I just want to say that that list was, was long, and it isn't even complete, and I know how much goes into it. I didn't really know all that, but it is amazing, the work that you do on our behalf, behalf of our students and families, and please say to the whole team, this award is, is, means a lot to us, I hope, I hope, and I think it does mean a lot to you too as well. And you're welcome to come on up and shake hands.
We're gonna do a picture?
Oh, and a picture apparently?
All right.
Madam President, Board of Directors, I'd like to introduce Dr. Forrest Greek, who's, I think Forrest's, his favorite part of Forrest's job is to take a moment to recognize some really amazing team members and some folks that are true, truly inspiring for us all. Mr. Greek?
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Garcia, members of the board, definitely a great part of my job. It's my pleasure to recognize our whole educator board recognition for the month of April to our educational support professionals, or more affectionately referred to as our parent educators. Tacoma, excuse me, Tacoma Public Schools would like to thank our parent educators for their dedication to ensure our students are supported at the highest level. Parent educators provide a critical role at each of our schools, from one-on-one to support to assisting classroom staff with lessons and individualized learning. Joining me here today is two of our principals, Ed Shaw at Washington, and Ronnie Fullerton, who's at Arlington Elementary School, and they're gonna provide a little more specific acknowledgement of two of our rock star parent educators who joined us here tonight, and they're representing the parent educator group along with Kathy Unruh. So if you could join me?
So, good evening. I am Ronnie Fullerton, the proud principal of Arlington Elementary School, and I am here to honor Gianna Kiyochi, who's actually in the audience. First, I just want to say that Gianna is very humble, and when I first went to congratulate her for her award, she said she tried to not have them nominate other people, and was kind of like, I don't, I don't want this word, I don't deserve this word, but she's very deserving of this award or this recognition. Gianna has a kind spirit that really gets to know the students she works, she really gets to know the students she works with, and focuses on their physical, social, emotional, academic needs. She and her counterpart colleague in the classroom provide a very safe and nurturing environment, and they kind of switch off and differentiate with each other, and they know their students and where they're at, at all times. I've seen them several times in their rooms. She's a very competent teacher in her own right, and also supports and advocates for her fellow colleagues by volunteering, volunteering to represent them. She also supports our school in many different ways, and I want to say in my 28 years of experience in Tacoma Public Schools, I've been inspired by the dedication of many educational support professionals who have very diverse backgrounds. Some of the ones that I've come across have been former business owners, realtors, mothers, fathers, homemakers, youth outreach workers, and future certificated teachers, and I'm glad we have, we're focusing our efforts on mentoring a lot of educational support professionals to become teachers, because I've seen some incredible teaching from them over the years. They have shown themselves to be great teachers and mentors to students, and are some of the most flexible and dedicated staff members performing other tasks like noon hour supervisors, crossing guards, student recognition organizers, language interpreters, and community liaisons. I'm pleased that we are honoring our educational support professionals, and I thank you for the honor of speaking on behalf of them.
Good evening. My name is Ed Shaw, I'm the principal at Washington Elementary, and I also oversee the Hoyt Early Learning Center, and so I'm here to speak a little bit about Elizabeth Wally, our building educational support professional. And this is my 40th year in education, and I have worked with many, many, many parent educators or educational support professionals, and they're an integral part of what we do every day, teaching, toileting, diaper changing. Some of our people work with the very most vulnerable students in Tacoma and do such a good job, and so I'm gonna say a little bit about Mrs. Wally right now. At Washington, we instill in our kids cougar pride, and it's the perseverance, responsibility, inclusiveness, dynamic, being dynamic, and being empathetic, and so this is kind of, these all, all these words also describe Mrs. Wally. And so, I'm just gonna go through a few bullets here that I put together for her. Mrs. Wally perseveres through anything from kindergarten lunch to providing small group intervention, which she does very well. Mrs. Wally wears many hats at Washington and is responsible for all those jobs that she does so very well. Mrs. Wally works to be inclusive of all students and sets an example for others to follow. Mrs. Wally shows her dynamic personality in a very quiet way. Students love to be in her small group intervention, and teachers want to have their students with her. While watching Mrs. Wally with kindergarten students or following one student at recess, you can see the empathetic way that she kneels down or sits beside a student so that they're just heard. I'm so glad that Mrs. Wally chose to come to Washington, and I just want to give her a nice round of applause, and to all of the other educational support professionals that we could not do without, and our students couldn't, so thank you.
Gentlemen and ladies, would you like to come up and shake hands and get congratulated? On behalf of all your partners out there that do this work, I don't know if there's a picture getting taken, there's...
Kathy, can you join him? Kathy, can you join him, please? Thank you so much.
All right, Superintendent, I believe there's another item.
I just want to take a quick moment to thank all of our educational support specialists. We could not do any of this work without them on our team, and so we're extremely grateful. And so, Director Keating, I know you wanted to make...
I did. Sorry. I didn't mean to rush on. No, because it's like, you know, I don't know, my, my kid is about to graduate, and both Miss Wally and Miss Unruh were amazing parent educators for my own kid, and I got to be in classrooms alongside them, and on the playground, and in the lunchroom, and in all kinds of hallway, and, and I know you're two of many, many amazing parent educators, and I'm just really grateful, and I'm excited to see you both here, and I'm excited to have you be honored, Miss Wally, so, yeah.
Thank you. And before he sneaks out, I do want to take a moment to recognize Mr. Ed Shaw. Mr. Ed Shaw is chosen to retire this year, and Ed has, he has been a great impact to many, many kids, staff members, colleagues, myself, and I'm just really grateful for Ed and the service that he has provided to this community, and so he'll probably sneak out the door, but ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say thank you to Ed and congratulations. I have a team here, we're gonna give you an update per your request. As you know, this spring, we were going through a process with our partners at Metro Parks. There was a plan to put in two new fields at the Stanley Elementary and the park that was right there. Metro Parks made some decisions with community input, and decided that those fields would not be the best place to be placed there, and then you asked us for some updates, and so I've asked Mr. Williams to give us an update in the last two weeks of what kind of journey we've been on and what are our next steps.
Yes, just wanted to provide a very quick update on, in regards to Stadium High School and Stadium Region sports fields. Obviously, we were tasked to look at alternative sites. Obviously, Stanley is no longer a viable option. We've worked closely with Metro Parks, and they've offered PEC Sports Complex as, for consideration to meet the needs of our students. We've conducted a site analysis of that space and determined that both fields will not fit there. With that said, we will be establishing an all-season multi-sport field for baseball and soccer at PEC's field. We will have some additional improvements there. In regards to the fast pitch field, that will be placed at Hilltop Heritage. Obviously, our timeline has changed. Construction will start in spring 2024, but our commitment to these projects has not been excellent. Just want to provide the board and public this slide so they understand the distance. I believe at Stanley, we were looking at 2.1 miles away and about an eight or nine-minute drive. The travel time to PEC for the baseball field is seven minutes with 1.6 miles, and looking at Stadium High School to Hilltop Heritage, it's about a five-minute drive and 1.1 miles. It's also important to note, since we will be at Hilltop Heritage, our team is in discussion to see if we can make some alterations, small enhancements on the track field as well, and that is my update.
Couple subtleties, and so if I'm a, I'm a stadium tiger, fast pitch player, I'm sitting at home going, why can't we go faster? And the reason is, is we have to start the design process in many ways all over again. You can't legally just cut and paste a permit. There's drainage, there's design, and so we won't be waiting till spring to start, but there is work that has to be done with our partners at the City of Tacoma, our partners at Metro Parks, and so we're gonna go as fast as we can. Folks may say, well, what if we just enhance somewhere else? And so what does enhancing mean? In the Pacific Northwest, fields are challenging because of rain, and so we do want all-weather in fields and outfields whenever possible, because it allows our kids to play, even if it's wet outside or rain the night before, because the drainage is provided in there. And so even if we went to another place in town and tried to do turf, we would have to start all over again. And so we are committed to, as we made the decision today, to work as aggressively as we can to design, to meet the milestones, and to put these fields in. I want to be very clear that this is the home field for the stadium baseball team, although it says it's all-purpose. There is ways to enhance that field, so when it is not used for baseball, it can be used for other community uses in there. So the stadium families will be getting some more information over the weekend about what are our next steps. There is a space in our natural process that Morris and the team lead in our design space to say, okay, within these parameters, because you know, you can't change the dimensions of a baseball field per se, but there is ways to say, student voice, help us shape this and make it yours and your home, and so we'll be going through that process. And so we are excited to take our next steps. It has been a tough spring for a lot of folks. It has been a meaningful spring. We have, we have made a decision, and so we are going to now move forward, and so thank you for your patience at home. Thank you for Chris, all your tremendous support and your team's support. We will be giving you regular updates of our progress, and so this is the first of many.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Chris, and Morris, and team, that's been really agonizing through this process for quite a long time now, and we appreciate the, the clarity of what's going forward and why the delay, and I think it is unfortunate, but it is gonna happen, which is the most important thing, so.
And I want to thank our Metro Parks partners, they are definitely committed, right? They made a bold statement, say, we're going to put these in as fast as we can, and so we're looking forward to that continued partnership in that space, so, thank you.
Anybody have any questions of Chris before he goes back and forth, back and forth through the mic? Great, and yes, so I guess as an emphasis to that, that PEC field is, is a piece of Metro Parks, so that's where the partnership with the parks is crucial and will continue to be productive and nurturing, so, okay? Thank you, everybody. All right. Item eight, staff report to the board, right here, we have an ELA adoption update.
Thank you. We have Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Tammy Larson, and the team is gonna give you an update. You may have got a chance at home to see the slide deck, there was a link to it. Tammy's gonna take you through all 67 slides.
Ten minutes.
We are giving you an update, we've given you some updates in the past, you are not taking any actions, but you'll see the steps, and then for those at home that you're listening, please, if you have any questions, you'll see a lot of materials in the appendices, but you can always reach out to us as well, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Yes, I'm hoping my PowerPoint will go up, otherwise I'll just have to freestyle, and we'll see how that goes. I'm not quite sure. I am speaking for my team. I would like to acknowledge Lisa Hensler and Lindsay Osland, who are both instructional facilitators in our department, and this year's worth of work that I'm going to talk to you about tonight could not have happened without them. I just volunteered or voluntold to make the presentation on our behalf, so, here we go. So I am talking to you about our process this year, we have been involved, I came to you last spring to let you know we were looking at K5 ELA materials. It has been a year-long process, and so I'm just gonna update you with where we're at, and like Dr. Garcia said, I will not be talking to all 67 slides, but please feel free to review them, because I will refer to them, we just don't have time to go there. So I'm old-school in some ways, I, anytime a decision is being made in a school and we're talking about decisions for kids, we always have to start with data, and so our data, since the state SBA has been in place in 2014, 15, up to where we are last year when we took the SBA, we can see, although you might say we're not far behind the state in the amount of kids that are leaving their grade level proficient, we are and have been for some time allowing almost 50% of students going to the next grade level, not at grade level standard. So we know we might need some support to help those kiddos. This also is confirmed in four years of our combined eye-ready assessment, so this is kindergarten through fifth-grade kids, the amount of kids that are on grade level each year, and the amount of kids that are one year up to three years below grade level. So we can still see, even with the eye-ready assessment, that we take three times a year, this is the end-of-year data point, less than 50% of our kids are at grade level in literacy at the end of the year, and more than 50% of our kids are one grade level or up to three grade levels behind. The big why of why we want to look at an ELA literacy curriculum adoption to meet this need is one of the most important aspects of achievement at the school level and school improvement as a whole is a guaranteed and viable curriculum. I talk a lot about the importance of curriculum as an equity issue. If teachers in one school are using a particular curriculum that another school or another classroom or another grade level isn't using, we don't have equity of learning opportunities for kids, so when we have one viable, research-based curriculum in place, we can guarantee or improve the likelihood that all kids are getting equitable learning around literacy. So through our review process last summer, we reviewed multiple publishers, which I believe I shared with you about in the fall. The two final pilot materials that we ended up piloting were Savis, My View, and Benchmark Advance. Both of these materials met the requirements of our rubric that we created as a DC/DC that you can see in the appendices. They are both aligned equally to the Washington State learning standards, they both address instruction for all the components of literacy. They both address instruction for all the components of literacy, phonics. Reading, writing, speaking, listening, all in one comprehensive cohesive program, which we haven't had for years. They are also designed for whole groups, small group and one in one instruction, which is aligned to our TPS and literacy framework. Also, both materials scored green for meeting. The standard for ed reports, again, that's linked in the appendices. And they are all both aligned to the current reading of research, two things that I didn't say here that I should have. Is they both also are inquiry based literacy programs, so they both. Although you're we're teaching literacy skills, we are learning and reading about science and social studies content. Through an inquiry based project learning. Approach where there is always an inquiry project as a culminating. Activity of the learning at the end of the unit, they both also have extensive. High quality electronic components, so everything that teachers and students receive. Hard copy is also available electronically and beyond, so even beyond what we will get. In hands, there's tons more resources and tools online and both programs included that. I talked a little bit on that last site about the science of reading and. I happen to have a love of literacy, the majority of my thirty two years of education have been involved in teaching, leading, coaching. Literacy and I often say that literacy is so complex that it is like teaching rocket science. It it's very complex and what the recent research and the research of the National Reading Panel of two thousand and one. And fort reinforces for us is that important of all the components. So yes, we need a curriculum that addresses all of the foundational skills, including phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, decoding. Sight words, that's one part of that rope of reading that you see in that graphic there, but if we just did those things. Kids might be able to decode a word or call a word, but they would have no comprehension or understanding of the meaning of that word. So it's so very important that we're also addressing and systematically explicitly teaching vocabulary, background knowledge. Giving kids those opportunities to reason verbally and to. Think deeply, so all of those pieces are addressed in both of these materials that we piloted. Our process has looked like this, so like I said, we piloted both materials. I'll talk a little bit, we had over a hundred plus pilot teachers across our system. So from September to January, we trained those K five teachers in the materials. They use the materials, they use the assessments, they use the online resources. Then, starting in January, we took those materials away from them, it's very hard to be a pilot teacher. And then we trained them in new materials that they used. The materials, the assessment, and again, the electronic components during this part of the pilot, we also. Provided the opportunity for our community. Staff members who didn't pilot the materials and families to come and take a look at these both sets of these materials. They could come in person, touch, interact with the materials onsite here at CAB, we also had them at the PDC. Or they had the opportunity to go online and check out all the materials there and we were able to get some feedback from some community members. Just as of Monday, we completed the final scoring of these materials. And our pilot teachers made a recommendation to our DC DC Tuesday night, I went to the DC DC and shared this. Recommendation that was made and they gave us their thumbs up to. Go to the Instructional Materials Committee, which also happened tonight and now today, I'm here making a presentation about that recommendation to you. With a hope that you will support a recommendation for adoption on the May eleventh meeting. So. This decision was made from those hundred plus pilot teachers, surveying them after every unit that they taught. Having them give comments on things that worked, things that didn't, you can see all that and more than you want to see in the appendices. I'm sure we also surveyed all, gave the opportunity for students of all those pilot teachers. To give us feedback, so we have over eight hundred students responses as we surveyed them. We also have some staff, family and community review comments and input. So that's all part of what's behind this recommendation tonight, and like I said, you can check that out if you're interested. Our final scoring that happened along to the components that we were scoring for. You'll see, we've got two different. Tables here of data because K two teachers teach foundational skills. And those materials have foundational skills materials and then three through five does not have foundational skills, so we serve the. We surveyed and scored them a little bit differently. If you look on the top row of each of those tables is the benchmark materials. And on the bottom row is the Savis materials. If you look at that bottom row compared to the top one for both tables. And every criteria area scored. Savis outscored benchmark in each of the criteria areas. With that being said. Our pilot teachers recommended the adoption of Savis with a seventy eight percent recommendation. With, yeah, seventy eight percent recommendation. The reasons that they shared for making the recommendation for Savis included high levels of engagement, they really saw that students were. More engaged while using these materials, that the materials provided. Great opportunity for inclusivity and differentiation to meet the kids at the different needs that they're at, not all kids are at the same. Level and they all have different needs. They also felt that the student and teacher materials were of higher quality as well as the digital materials. They highly, and if you go through some of the appendices, you'll see. They were absolutely in favor of the teacher friendliness of these materials as well as the student friendliness. And my thinking is this, it's really expensive to do a adoption like these, if we adopt materials that teachers aren't gonna use because they're not teacher friendly. Is that really the best way to move forward, so I feel very confident that teachers are excited to. Widespread implement these materials. And the last one is that piece I talked about earlier that they feel that one of the engagement pieces that is. Looked at is that these are materials that are inquiry based, teaching about content related to science and social studies. In a project based way, which we know is engaging for kids. I won't read the comments for you, but there's just a few comments that we gathered and there's many, many more. In the appendices, but there are lots of comments around the engagement, the differentiation, materials and resources and inquiry projects. So if indeed on May eleventh, you were to support our recommendation for adoption, these would be our next steps. So we would work very closely with the publisher to start working on our professional development plan. Setting aside within our own department hours and budget for training, because there will need to be extensive training to help our teachers. Teach this comprehensive cohesive program. We are also looking to support implementation of starting of trainer of trainers. Model so that we have beyond just the two people we have in our department department to support the. All of the K five teachers in our district, so we would train some teacher leaders. In the publishers materials as well as training them in adult learning and facilitation skills. So they could assist with that, develop teacher leadership and capacity. In August, while then in June, we would offer some training to those teachers who are early adopters, they want to spend the summer getting into those. Teacher guides and doing some training. An idea that supports that idea from doing it is June, there might be a lot we can learn for doing it for those teachers that are ready in June. To inform our wider. Broad. Training that we will do before school starts up, so we can get some lessons learned. Then in August, we'll train our principals and our instructional coaches in the materials. And we will continue to train our implementation team, our train our teams on. Implementation leadership, because there are large components of leadership choices. That we can do to support implementation and then in September, obviously, we would do a widespread training to launch this. Curriculum across our district. So again, I can't share appreciation enough for the hundred plus pilot teachers who engaged in this work. Not only were we asking them to teach. Two new sets of materials, which is, you know, a lot to ask. We also surveyed them to death, I think some of them might think, and they really. Did give us that feedback that helped form the recommendation and helped us and the DC DC support that. Recommendation, I couldn't obviously have done, we couldn't have done this without the leadership of Lisa and Lindsay. Who supported those hundred teachers, right, like they really were on the ground with those teachers, helping them. Work out how to try out these new materials. Our twenty member DC DC team and then also our instructional coaches and principals in the buildings that supported those teams of. Pilot teachers. Just gives you an idea, we did have pilot teachers in every elementary school or all but one. Elementary thirty five other thirty six elementary schools, we also had teachers pilot from our tool two dual language. Schools because both of these publishers have really rich dual language materials, so we wanted to test those out. We also had some teachers from our Tacoma Online Learning. School as well, so we had widespread participation in this pilot. So. Questions?
Tammy, thank you so much, this is a very thorough and detailed presentation and I went through the appendices as well and it's, there was a lot of data here, so. First, I want to thank you and the team, but I also want to thank everyone who worked so hard to participate in this, I think as board members. This is one of of the most crucial jobs we have is to adopt curriculum. And obviously, none of us being, you know, experts in this field, we depend heavily upon the recommendations for those who. Who are teachers and working with young children and so want to really thank you for making sure that that it was extensively. Used and surveyed and that you got lots of data back and it made an educated decision that you're now asking us to decide, so. I'm gonna open it up for anyone else on the on the dais who wants to say anything about it. Director Keating?
I have an acronym acronym question and I feel like.
Okay, I know I used a lot of them, I apologize.
Feel like I asked you this in the fall and last year, but. The for just the public who may not be aware, could you explain what DC DC means, please?
District Content Decision Committee. I, to be honest, I hardly ever call it the DC DC, I call it the Adoption Committee, because those are a lot of words to say, but yes, District Content Decision Committee.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
And then the other thing that in looking at the, I guess it's technically the third slide. Around the eye ready combined, the four year combined, like every year, when I saw four years, it like sort of gave me a pause because. Of the impacts and just what has happened over the last four years. And so I guess I'm wondering if, you know, for the public who may not, it's hard to remember all the things that took place. And so curious if you can just maybe speak to a little bit about. You know, just some of the impacts, because if, you know, there there was no eye ready in twenty nineteen twenty twenty. And so that, you know, just, yeah, I'm just sensitive to that because I think it's easy to forget where we came out of. And those continued impacts and how we continue to work.
Yep, so we did not do the SBA in nineteen twenty because of the pandemic and COVID and being at home, we did do eye ready. Students did it at home with their parents' support because it is an electronic. Assessment system, so they did do it in nineteen twenty, or is it accurate? You know, invalid? We hope so. But. Regardless, even if we went back before the first, the four years. Essentially, the average is the same, about fifty percent of our kids are at grade level and. So in some grade levels, more than fifty percent are below grade level.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer and the honesty of the answer, thank you very much.
Anybody else coming? Okay, well, again, it's a complex process and it's, I just think it's in the best. Interest of our students to get them the most interactive and. Easy to understand curriculum so that they can move forward and and be start start to be reading at grade level, which is our goal. So thank you very much and we will look forward to the eleventh.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number nine, members of the public wishing to speak to the board to address the board. School Board Members, encourage public participation and your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting and the superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@tacoma.k twelve dot wa dot U S. Please contact the Board Office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. And so this gets at the fact we have two options, one is the writing the board ahead, which we've talked about and there were no comments, is my understanding for this board meeting. And so that leaves us with the second option, which is verbal comment here tonight. And I see that there is a blue card in front of our General Counsel, which means we have at least one person. So I am gonna turn it over to General Counsel Ben Row, who will walk us through the process and invite the person up.
Yeah, thank you, President Palm Bright. Public comment proceeds under Board Policy fourteen thirty, under Board Policy fourteen thirty, the Board President may interrupt and or terminate comments. When the speaker exceeds the time allotted or when comments are abusive, obscene or irrelevant. You can find a summary of Board Policy fourteen thirty on the front and back of the blue speakers cards in the lobby and also at tacomaschools.org. This evening, we have one speaker and it's Gina Regina Coleman.
I know.
Because that's really what I go by.
Good evening. President, Board Superintendent and Cabinet, I'm Gina Coleman, Union President for Nutrition Services. It takes many hands to run a school, let alone an entire district, from administration to certificated staff, classified staff and community partners. We all have an important role to play in the education of our community's students. On behalf. Sorry, on behalf of the Tacoma Nutrition Services Chapter of Public School Employees of Washington, SEIU. Local nineteen forty eight, I want to publicly thank you. The Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors and Superintendent for hearing our concerns. During contract negotiations and approving our tentative agreement. We also would like to thank the district bargaining team, it's not easy to do that month after month after month. For negotiating in good faith and working with our union to bargain a fair contract. Now that this new contract is in place, I see how positive the impact has been on our membership. We appreciate being your partners in education and we look forward to our continued work together. Through mutual respect and collaboration, there is a bright future ahead for Tacoma Public Schools and Nutrition Services, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Tammy. All right, that is for public comments. Onto item number ten, the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I'm over to adopt.
That was enthusiastic, by the way, I like that.
Yeah, they always take all of them.
Okay, there you go, and so did. It's been moved and seconded, any comments, questions? Additions, subtractions, all right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none, it is adopted four to zero. All right, item number eleven, policy matters, we have second reading of our new policy fifty five fifteen workforce secondary traumatic stress. And turning it over to General Counsel Ben Row, who will walk us through this, we saw this last business meeting, first reading and since that time. The Equity Policy Review Team has met and we. Equity Policy Review Team has met and we walked through it thoroughly. And as always, they had some excellent comments, which, uh, General Counsel has incorporated. So I will turn it over to him.
Yes, I'll read in the intro and then, uh, share a little bit about the policy. So the district's general counsel, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, recommends that the board adopt the revised proposal of policy fifty-five fifteen. So fifty-five fifteen, we have the first reading at the last business meeting. Um, is a policy that's required by state law for us to adopt. Uh, we're also required to adopt a regulation that implements what the policy, uh, directs us to do, which is provide support for secondary traumatic stress. Uh, just by way of summary real quick, secondary traumatic stress is the name, uh, that the experts in the field have given, uh, those symptoms associated with folk working with, uh, students in particular, uh, going through some real traumatic events. Uh, some of that secondary stress being passed on to those frontline folk who work directly with students. And so what the state has required that we do is pass a, uh, policy that's closely aligned to WASDA's model policy, recognizing the importance of, uh, and providing a supportive, um, you know, supportive measures for, uh, folk that experience these symptoms. What you see here, if you look at the red lines, um, on that second page of the, uh, agenda item, um, as President Bonbright said, our friends in the Equity Policy Review Team, uh, had a number of, uh, recommendations and suggestions. Some of them you see reflected in the red lines of fifty-five fifteen. Others will appear either in the, uh, the ones that sort of we've, we've talked through and, and are, make a lot of sense to implement. We'll see them in the regulation and we'll also see them on the actual materials that we push out to staff, uh, largely in an effort through HR. So, uh, our Assistant Superintendent of HR Renee Trueblood, uh, and Monica Fritz, one of the members of her team, uh, have really led the work in sort of marshaling what these resources are and able to, so they were able to push out the staff. Uh, so if you vote to adopt today, which I, which I hope you do, um, those next steps will be looking at the regulation and then pushing out what that actual support looks like.
So, and I just have to really, uh, as, as always, I'm impressed with the work of the Equity Policy Review Team. These are community members who volunteer their time, uh, representing different fact, uh, portions of our community to really look, put a, um, an equity eye, um, from, based on life experience in helping us make sure that our policies are, um, really reaching, um, students and benefiting students the way we want, what we hoping for. And, um, this is a perfect example about how we got talking a lot, a lot of things that are actually not about the policy, but how the regulation, um, might need to be written. And it was, um, fabulous the way, uh, uh, General Counsel Ben Row actually managed that whole conversation and the expectations, but also took, um, started really creative conversations among the group that took us to the next level. So I just want to compliment everyone involved. Um, anyone else have any questions about this issue?
I fully support it, so I would like to move to adopt.
Let's do that.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, and with no further comments, I will, um, ask for those to support it by, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, four zero, we have a new policy fifty-five fifteen, thank you. All right, um, financial report, item number twelve. The next quarterly financial report will be presented at the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three business meeting. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district's website at HTTPS, uh, colon slash slash WWW. W dot tacomaschools.org slash department slash business and finance. Item number thirteen, curriculum and instruction. Thirteen point one, approval of the contractual agreement between the Hilltop Artists and Residents, Tacoma Heart and Tacoma Public Schools from September twenty twenty-two to August twenty twenty-five.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Director of Innovative Learning and CTE, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the agreement between Heart and Tacoma Public Schools from September one, twenty twenty-two to August thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Funding source, career and technical education.
I would move to adopt, but did we skip thirteen point one?
Yeah.
I moved to adopt on thirteen point two, maybe we'll go back to thirteen point one.
Yeah, we skipped an item.
Oh, no, thirteen point one, there is, there is a different thirteen point one on the, hmm. Okay, let's see. Well, let's, uh, yeah, let's just do thirteen point two since we did it and we'll go back because that's odd.
I moved to adopt.
My two sheets say two different things. All right, so go ahead, um, shall, are you moving thirteen point two? All right, thirteen point two, uh, seconded? Anyway, okay, moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions or comments about that? Other than to say that the, we are deeply appreciative of the Hilltop Artists and Residents Program and it has made a huge difference in so many of our young students' lives. So really appreciative and glad that this is happening and expanding. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, passes three, uh, four to nothing. All right, so I'm going to go to three point, thirteen point one, approval of a contract amendment number one, um, TSD dash twenty-two dash one-two-three with tutor.com for online tutoring platform for TPS students.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve TSD twenty-two, one-twenty-three, addendum number one, between tutor.com and Tacoma Public Schools from September one, twenty twenty-three to August thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Funding source, Esser.
Great.
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any comments or questions on this particular item?
Zeke, um, um, Director Zeke, hi Zeke, question, um. Was it earlier this school year when this kind of was brought up and then we had multiple options and this is one that we're choosing to go with? I, I think I might be misremembering.
Uh, in spring, we had multiple options of last year. Tutor.com is the one we picked.
Okay. I remember and I'm just like, this was a good one though, but thank you. That was my only question.
Okay. Um, okay, all, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstain? It passes four to zero, thank you, Zeke. Uh, moving on to the, business matters, fourteen point one, approval of the guaranteed, um, maximum price GMP, amendment number four to the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Corsmo Construction for the Synthetic Fields Upgrades Bundles Project.
Yes, this is a continuation of our upgrades of fields across the district. This particularly being at Lincoln High School, they will be receiving eight new tennis courts, one new baseball field and one new softball field. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Number Four, which states the guaranteed maximum price for scope of work at Lincoln High School Athletic Complex. The Chief Operating Officer also recommends that the Board authorize the Superintendent or designate to sign said GMP Amendment Number Four, an amount of twenty-three million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars excluding sales tax.
Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt, item fourteen point one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Any nay? Okay, we have it four point, four to nothing. Uh, okay, fourteen point two, the approval for the, of guaranteed maximum price GMP Amendment Number Three to the contract between Tacoma School District Number Ten and its automate, and ATS automation for the HVAC indoor air quality upgrades project.
Uh, once again, yes, this is, this is a continuation of our HVAC upgrades across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Number Three, which states the guaranteed maximum price for scope of work at Blix and Lincoln. The Chief Operating Officer also recommends the Board authorize the Superintendent or designate to sign said GMP Amendment Number Three in the amount of twelve million, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Williams? Hearing none, all those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes four to, four to nothing. Item number fourteen point three, approval of the guaranteed maximum price GMP Amendment Number Three to the contract between Tacoma Schools District Number Ten and Forma Construction for the pools upgrade.
Uh, this is a continuation of making, uh, pool upgrades at our, at five sites. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve and authorize the Superintendent or designate to sign said GMP Amendment Number Three, an amount of ten million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt, item fourteen point three.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments?
Comment?
Yes, comment.
Um, I know we already thanked you and your team earlier, but just another thank you. I love when we have you at the podium so many times in one day. So I think that a lot of people in the public don't understand like how our buildings are built and how they function, how they operate. I think you've done a really good job of explaining that to us as a board and always breaking down the acronym, even when you weren't there, we reminded them. Um, so I just want to thank you and your whole team all over again, because just reading this, I know it can be cumbersome for a lot of people, but thank you for the work you guys are doing to upgrade and improve our schools for all of our students.
All right, thank you.
And I will also add to that about the pools that, um, I know that it's, uh, it's a, it's a, it's actually a joy and, and, and a privilege to have pools in our facilities, but they are expensive to maintain and complex to maintain. So, um, you always do a great job, um, Chris, within your team and man, trying to do it during the summer, trying to make sure that kids aren't impacted, but it is, it is a tough, uh, road a hoe and you've got all these different projects that you're balancing. So like echo, um, director, I mean, um, yeah, Director McElroy's, uh, opinion on this, so thank you. All right, ready? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, passes four to zero. All right, there is no other business this evening, so we will move on to Amanda to come up and give us her student report.
Hi, good afternoon, my name's Amanda Peterson and I go to Lincoln High School. Um, some updates on Lincoln is that our ASB is preparing for our multicultural week, which is going to happen May twenty-nine through June second. So this also includes our multicultural assembly that Friday and a cultural festival, which we've never done before, which is going to happen after the assembly. Um, this is an event that, um, most of our students have been asking about and are very excited for because Lincoln is a very diverse school. So, um, our students are eager to represent and show off their culture. Um, speaking of that, um, our Filipino Student Union and our Poly Club, um, had a performance at Whitman Elementary School, um, on Tuesday. So we performed, um, a, like a, a traditional, um, Filipino dance called Nikling. And then Poly Club also performed and it was really cool. Um, we also have another performance tomorrow at Browns Point Elementary at six o'clock. Um, so it goes from six to eight o'clock and we're going to have Lincoln's Latino Club, Filipino Club and our Poly Club perform there. Um, yeah. Um, to end it off, Lincoln students have been pretty burnt out and stressed because of AP test preps and also ASB elections are coming up too. So all of that tied into these next few weeks, so. And I'll be going home, preparing for both of those things, so wish me luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, for always being here and, and, um, adding a lot of important, um, contextual, um, impressions of what's happening at school for us, so thank you. Your voice is appreciated. All right, board comments. Vice President Stroger.
Okay, I got a quick announcement, uh, just one quick thing, uh, tomorrow is going to be a pretty big day, tomorrow and Saturday, uh, for, for schools and our, for our students, the students of our schools. Uh, we have the Hiring and Try a Trade Fair popping up at the Tacoma Dome, uh, starting on Friday. About a thousand students, I hear will be bussed in, uh, to take advantage of the opportunities that may be presented to them, uh, down at the Tacoma Dome. So ten to one on Friday, ten to three on Saturday. Sounds like Saturday is going to include a lot of student demos. Sounds like it's a DJ club or something going to be there. I mean, sounds like something that you don't really want to miss. So I just said that I'm going, so I'll be there tomorrow to experience, uh, what's going to happen. Uh, every school district in the county was invited, so this isn't a selfish type of deal. We want everybody, every young person to have opportunity to tap into some of these potential jobs, um, and learn about trades, uh, if they are interested. So this is exciting, about fifty-plus vendors will be present. Again, I'll just tell you, tomorrow, ten to one, Saturday, ten to three, at the Tacoma Dome. Uh, be there or, well, just be there, thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Stroger. Um, Director Keating?
Um, I don't have a lot to report. Um, I will say with great relief, and I know I am, um, not the only one, uh, signee die did happen. So our legislature, um, did end their session on Sunday, um, and, um, there's still a lot to unpack about what happened. And, um, President Bonbright and I both were on the WASDA Ledge Rep, um, webinar today and there was a ton of really great information. Um, both Senator, uh, Wellman and Senator, um, Claire Wilson were there, who are chairs of the Education Committee for the Senate Education Committee. Um, and they, they, um, they just did a really good job of explaining, um, some of the things that did pass, but there's a ton to still unpack, so. Um, and then just what those financial impacts are going to be, what the implementation impacts are going to be. So, just like with every other session, there's still a lot to unpack. Um, and then as far as policy stuff, um, uh, is related policy things. So there was, um, Congress passed, um, a federal athlete ban on transgender students in K-12 and college, um, athletics, um, and that happened, um, last week. Um, and has moved over to the Senate. Um, it has, um, coincided also with the Department of Education's, um, release of their proposed ru- rule for the inclusion and the protection of transgender students participating in athletics, um, in both K-12 and, um, uh, higher ed. So these things are, um, coinciding at the same time and there is still a comment period. The comment period for the Department of Ed, um, continues through, um, May fifteenth, um, on their proposed rule. And the proposed rule would actually, if adopted, would overturn, um, any athletic ban on a state level, state by state level. Um, and, um, as, as well as, um, uh, a federal ban if it were ever to be implemented. So, um, those are, um, some of the fun things that are happening on a federal level. Um, and then, um, tomorrow, um, I believe that I'm saying this right, I'm a little off on my calendar, but Communities in School Luncheon is tomorrow, so I'll be attending that. Um, and, um, a little kind of geeky plug that isn't necessarily school-related, but, um, the, uh, Bird Note that, um, is on NPR, um, there is a walk in Titlow Park tomorrow morning that I'm going to participate, um, on tour with the, um, Executive Director for Bird Note. Um, and for those that may not know, if I'm ever senile and can't speak, you just put me in front of a window and a bird feeder, I'm going to be super satisfied and happy. So I'm going to be really excited with my little bird app to walk around Titlow Park tomorrow. But not student-related, but just going to be kind of fun and cool and it'll be beautiful and sunny.
Yes.
Um, and I think, uh, I think that's it for now.
Great. Director McElroy.
So I forgot my notes, but, um, just note that I'm out in the community doing the good work. Um, coming up for me, uh, Mount Home High School, I was invited to their varsity soccer game. There's one tonight and I was like, there's no way I'm going to make it, but their last conference game is next week, Tuesday, May second at Lakes High School. Pretty sure, James isn't here to tell me I'm right or wrong, I'm pretty sure it's at Lakes, that's what I think I remember that I saw on the paper. So I will be there on Tuesday, I'm just supporting the Mount Home of T-Birds, um, in their last conference game. There's a lot of school sports going on right now, um, so if you can, if you have a middle school or a high schooler, and even some of our ELO programs and, um, Beyond the Bell, they have a lot of activities and just go out and root for kids. Um, they want to see as many people as they can and the louder we cheer for them, the better they perform, you just scream. Um, so yeah, go out and support the kiddos. I, yeah, I forgot my notes, so.
That's okay, we can catch up next time.
And tomorrow you're doing Community and Schools, I think I'm going to be at Tacoma Community House Luncheon. It's like exactly at the same time, had to make a decision, I knew someone from our board would be at the other one.
Yep, and I will be there as, at Communities and Schools as well. So, um, well, yep, it seems like, spring is really busy with a lot of these luncheons and fundraisers and so it's, it's hard to feel like we can't be everywhere at once. But, um, thank you for all of the information that you've shared so much on what's coming up. Um, naturally, I'm going to start off with J Mac. We met, we met the day after the last board meeting and it was, um, the focus was really around the whole youth violence prevention component. And it was a really engaging conversation and I want to thank Superintendent Garcia for putting out a challenge to our community partners, for all of us to figure out a way to make sure that we have safe places, safe zones for our students, especially middle and high schoolers throughout the summer, because summer's coming. And, um, so we want to make sure that there's places for, safe places for kids to go in the evening especially. That's usually the untempered time. Um, and so we're, um, Superintendent Garcia put out a, a challenge, um, to try and pull together opportunities at, at least ten sites where we can have, uh, open, safe spaces for youth to come, um, and, uh, from five PM to ten PM. And during the. Um, and uh from five P M to ten P M and during the weekday. And I have to say, the uh response has been really positive from our J Mac partners. And so we're moving, um, I think we probably, I think seven sites pretty much, we're trying, thinking are pretty committed. And we've still working on uh with the private sector to, to try and, and fund the other three. But um, so keep, we'll give you more and more updates as those get filled in. But uh, again, thanks to our visionary superintendent for really helping move the conversation from uh woe is me to action. So it's been really um outstanding to, to watch all the other elected officials in the community and the C E Os step up, work together and, and really be committed to, to creating safe spaces for our kids um all year round. So that was one. Um, the other thing is I went and visited uh Gray um Middle School uh since the last board meeting and really spent quite a lot of time, several hours there, really enjoyed meeting some of the kids. The students were uh, and, and a lot of the teachers and um, and that was really a fabulous experience. So um enjoyed that. Um, aside from the ledge work at WASDA, uh, the other thing was today, I um also Superintendent was there too. I saw him in the same room and then he was running around. But Roosevelt Elementary, under the guidance of Jennifer Cooper, who's the principal there, um, they have this president, presentation of learning today, which was extraordinary. Um, I started in a second, third joint classroom and the second and third graders had been given some prompts around um cultural awareness and how we can, you know, understand each other better if we understand each other's cultures and how to be, you know, giving and list good listeners. And so these second and third graders had created, they each picked a country that was relevant to them somehow. And they did a report about what was the culture in that country like, um, and some, all sorts of other facts. And it was really stunning, these second and third graders, how um, how creative they were, how articulate they were. And um, and, and their audience, by the way, was not just, you know, us adults. The fourth graders came in and were, were, were spoken to and, and sort of uh presented to by these second and third graders. And the fourth graders were also uh pretty amazing in that they asked really good questions, leading questions, not, you know, everybody was really um engaged. Uh, it was just uplifting. Then I went to the next series where it was fifth graders teaching to kindergartners and it was so cute. Um, these fifth graders were, their topic was about Native American culture and they were talking about the whole country and how, you know, where the, where the um, the different tribes, generally the bigger tribes, where they were kind of chunked out across the United States. And I was so impressed. I mean, it was college work. These kids had pictures, they had diagrams, they had written out. Um, and, and then the kids that were presenting to these kindergartners were trying to explain it in a way that they could understand. And this one girl was so sweet. She, this one little kindergartner was trying to say something, but there was so much going on in the hall because it was happening in the hallway, that he, she, and so she gets down really, she bends down, he gets down really close and he whispers in her ears and she ah, she just got up and she said, well, that's on the map right here. And then the kid was just awed by this presentation. So this is what peer interaction can do to help stimulate kids to, to learn um and explore and innovate. And I just want kudos to the teachers at Roosevelt. Uh, it went so smoothly. The teachers, all they had to say was, you know, she just put her hands on her head and total silence in the classroom. I mean, it was just amazing. So I just want to say it's hard work um every day that our teachers do, but these kids really are, you can see them thriving. And so for me, that's why I do this work. That's why I think everyone in this room does this work. And I just have to say, um, I so appreciate the teachers and um, and the administration over there at, at Roosevelt. And I um, and I know what's happening at other schools too. It just so happened that today, this is what got me high. So.
Madam President, I'd also like to just acknowledge the Technology Access Foundation, so that's uh part of that partnership and how students uh in a continuum. So thank you to the Technology Access Foundation for providing support in that methodology as well.
Thank you. I didn't even know that. So thank you for filling me in. Alright, so that is it for me. Um, and so item number eighteen is our next regular board meeting will be May eleventh. And just a heads up, I have a, a, I will be out of the state that, that board meeting. So Vice President Stroger will be sitting in this chair um, running the show.
With a gavel.
With the, oh, with the gavel. This will be so exciting. Um, and so that'll be six o'clock right here. I'm sorry to, to miss it. It should, you could feature and just see this go. Um, May eighteenth will be a board retreat or a study session. We haven't quite figured that out yet. Um, and May twenty-fifth will be a business meeting, our next business meeting for May. And it is just, we're creeping towards the end of the school year. Man, it is, it is coming up. So anyway, does anybody have anything else for the goodie the order? And if not, we are officially adjourned. Go out and enjoy the sunshine, everyone. Be safe.